Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's regular meeting of the Portsmouth Planning Board for May 15th. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have two items. Item A, approval of the minutes from the April 10th, 2008 joint work session with the Conservation Commission. And item B, approval of the minutes from the April 17th, 2008 Planning Board meeting. Any comments or questions on those?
John?
Counsel Dwyer?
I was not at the April 17th meeting, so just to correct that.
Okay. We'll note that. Any other comments? No? Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Seconded.
Who's seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Moving on to public hearings. The first public hearing. Item A, the application of Aquila Chase and Marcia N. Chase owners for property located at 71 Bay Cliff Road, and Stephen J. Little and Rosemary Golini owners for property located at 82 Driftwood Lane wherein preliminary and final subdivision approval for a lot line revision is requested between two lots having the following. Lot 42 is shown on Assessor Plan 207 decreasing in area from 24,695 square feet to 24,618 square feet with 71.20 feet of continuous street frontage on Driftwood Lane. And Lot 46 is shown on Assessor Plan 207 increasing in area from 12,203 square feet to 12,280 square feet and with 27.75 feet of continuous street frontage on Bay Cliff Road and lying in a zone where a minimum lot area of 15,000 square feet and 100 feet of street frontage is required. Said properties are located in a single residence B district and are shown on Assessor Plan 207 as lots 42 and 46. Platte file is on file in the Planning Department office and is identified as Plan 02-01-08. The board action on this matter has been deemed to be quasi judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point or it will be deemed waived. David, I'll turn this one to you.
Okay. For the board's information, the department has been working with the legal representative on this application. There are some concerns that need to be addressed and both the applicant, the attorney, and the department agreed that this should be postponed to the June 19th meeting. And if the board would make that as a motion, we will not have to advertise it again and the board, all issues should hopefully be resolved so you can consider it at that meeting.
Moved in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. We'll now move on to item B under public hearings. The application of Stephen J. Little, owner, for property located at 2 Moybus Terrace and Donald H. Sargent Living Trust, owner, for property located at 33 Pleasant Point Drive wherein preliminary and final subdivision approval for lot line revision is requested between two lots having the following. Lot 25 is shown on Assessor Plan 207 increasing in area from 22,783 square feet to 28,427 square feet with 113.63 feet of continuous street frontage on Moybus Terrace. And Lot 26 is shown on Assessor Plan 207 decreasing in area from 27,912 square feet to 22,268 square feet and with 322.58 feet of continuous street frontage on Pleasant Point Drive and lying in a zone where a minimum lot area of 15,000 square feet and 100 feet of street frontage is required. Said properties are located in a single residence B district and are shown on Assessor Plan 207 as lots 25 and 26. Platte plan is on file in the Planning Department office and is identified as Plan 03-01-08. The board action on this matter has been deemed to be quasi judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point or it will be deemed waived. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bernie Peelich. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Reese, Mr. Little, as well as Mr. Sargent, both of the abutting property owners. What is basically happening is they have agreed to a lot line adjustment whereby Mr. Sargent is going to be conveying what is pretty much his backyard, or a portion of his backyard, to Mr. Little. Mr. Little's lot will then have the necessary 100 feet of frontage. Mr. Sargent's lot will still be conforming. Both lots will remain conforming as far as lot area goes. David wanted me to simply explain to the board a little bit about the Little property and its frontage on that platted street which you see off of Mabus Terrace. When that building permit for that house was issued, I did not represent Mr. Little. He was represented by Attorney Lachlan at that time, and I represented the abutting property owner, Mr. Levine, on the other side. There was an agreement entered into with Bob Sullivan, the city attorney, regarding the use of that platted street and that paved driveway. At that point, it had been used by the Leavens and their predecessor entitled, going all the way back to the Tasetta's. The Tasetta's actually owned what is now the 4 Mabus Terrace property, now owned by the Leavens. And agreement was reached and we entered into an agreement which is on record in the Registry of Deeds whereby Mr. Little was allowed, because he had a nonconforming lot of record with frontage on that platted street, he was allowed to build his driveway up the platted street. And there was access provided to the, then, Tasetta's for access down to the water behind. What we're talking about today is the transfer of the 5,600 square feet. It is not essential to the Sargent property. The Sargent property fronts on Pleasant Point Drive and the driveway is off of Mabus Terrace. He has a rather large sprawling split level ranch there, as you can see. And the Little property is in dire need of what I would consider to be a front yard, and this parcel A that you see on your plan constitutes that front yard, and the parties agreed to the transaction, so it is basically a lot line adjustment between the two, between the two abutting property owners. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them for you.
Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, I'll now open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak? Two, four, against the application? Second time, third and final time, two, four, against? Seeing no one, rise, I'll close the public hearing.
Would you like a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Question? And I don't want to start a major discussion here, so please tell me this may be for another time, but Paper Street versus Platted Street?
That's why we're looking to get some clarification of the past history to put it on the plan so we can make sure that it reflects what was accurately drawn up by the parties when the original house was built.
Okay, and that would...
That's number one on your...
All right, good. Thank you.
You were saying?
I would make a motion for preliminary and final subdivision approval with the four stipulations listed.
Just preliminary?
Oh, just preliminary. I'm sorry. Just preliminary subdivision approval with four stipulations.
Second.
Second? Discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. We'll now move on to item C under public hearings. The amended application of David F. Mahoney, marital trust owner and Granite State Minerals applicant, for property located at 227 Market Street where an amendment to an approved site plan is requested to allow utilities to be brought on site above ground. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 119 as Lot 6 and lies within the waterfront industrial district. The board action on this matter has been deemed to be quasi judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point or it will be deemed waived. Seeing that? Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bernie Peelich, I'm here on behalf of Granite State Minerals. As you may recall, we came before you and received site plan approval almost a year ago. We also received approval from the zoning board, and this is involving relocation of the scale building or office building, the white building which you see in the aerial photo, from one side of the existing scale to the other side so that they can put in a second scale, which is, has been required by the Bureau of Ways and Measures. We believed that everything was go. We had actually pulled a building permit. We had a final construction management meeting with David Holden and several members of planning staff, and it was at that time that it was disclosed to us that Public Service Company would not allow undergrounding, or the electric service to go underground from an existing pole on the corner of, or where Bow Street makes the, I guess it's Bow Street, makes that curve. Because there were too many transformers on the pole, the pole could not be relocated and they couldn't underground service. So as a result, we discussed with David. David let the building permit be issued but stipulated that we would have to come back for an amended site plan review. What we're actually doing is, you can see from the aerial photo, the blue outline is where the building is going to be located. We're moving it so that the overhead utility is going to run from the pole for about 15 feet to the existing, the relocated building. I've shown you the, in red where the existing overhead utility is, in blue is where it's, the proposed utility is going to be. It's not a long run. It's, it's under 20 feet in length, so we're simply seeking to amend the site plan to allow that overhead electric line as opposed to an underground electric line which was originally shown on the plan and approved. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant? No? Thank you. Seeing no questions, I'll now open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak? Two, four, against the application? Second time, third and final time, two, four, against? Seeing no one, rise, I'll close the public hearing.
Just wish the board to note, everything Attorney Peelich said is correct. The department also reviewed this with the Department of Public Works. They concurred that it would not be appropriate to have it underground. The only difference is, this is actually a waiver of your regulations, so it requires a two-thirds of the board, but the department recommends that the waiver should be granted in this narrow instance.
I'll make a motion that we grant the waiver with all the stipulations from TAC?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Moving on to item D of the public hearings. The amended application of Parrot Avenue Place Inc., owner, for property located at 127 Parrot Avenue where an amendment to an approved site plan is requested to relocate a fence to the property line, plant two new trees, and create three new parking spaces with related paving, utilities, landscaping, drainage, lighting, and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 115 as Lot 3 and lies within the mixed residential office district and historic District A. The board action on this matter has been deemed to be quasi judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point or it will be deemed waived. Seeing that? Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Corey Carwell of MSC. With me here tonight is Julie Stone, the Director of Compass Care. Compass Care is a nonprofit organization located at Parrot Avenue that provides health care for senior citizens. Property is located on Parrot Ave., right next to the courthouse, about a quarter mile from here, right across the street from the South Mill Pond. There's a need for parking at the senior center. There's currently vehicles parking on some gravel out back. There's currently vehicles parking on one grass spot, and they're kind of growing and bulging at the seams. We're proposing three new parking spaces to the northerly portion of the site. Now, on your color drawing, that's shown as the darker gray. I've labeled them one, two, and three. Adjacent to space three is a hatched area. That hatched area is shown to provide maneuverability for traffic exiting space two. For example, a car can turn into space two, but to leave the site, it needs room to back up and turn out, and that's the purpose of that paved hatched area. Now, two or three years ago, adjacent to space three, there was a mid-sized tree in that location. That tree was hit by a vehicle. It has died. It was removed two years ago. And as part of this application, to make do for that tree that was removed, we're proposing two new trees in the courtyard to the rear of your building. And that's shown on the drawing to the rear of the building, right along the northerly property line. The third and final improvement we're proposing is the relocation of dilapidated chain link fence. There's a fence out there now adjacent to our proposed parking, approximately six feet off the boundary line. We're proposing to relocate that chain link fence to, at or near, the northerly boundary line. That'll also provide more maneuvering space for the parking spaces. So it's pretty small, three spaces, two trees, and a chain link fence. Any questions for myself or Julie Stone, we'd be happy to address.
Any questions for the applicant? Corey, I've got one question. Those two and a half inch caliper trees, how tall do you anticipate they'd be when they're planted?
Two and a half inch caliper, probably six to eight feet.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Coker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Many years ago, when the parking was done by the, I believe it was the Housing Authority did some work, I'm going to say nine, eight or nine years ago, and suddenly the gate sort of appeared because the plan that was submitted to the planning board had curbing all the way across, and suddenly there was a gate. So the Housing Authority had to come back to the planning board, and the benefit of the doubt was given that it was an oversight. And at that time, there was a great deal of discussion about what that gate was to be used for. And it was agreed that that gate was to be used for emergency access only. Keys were going to be at the fire department, so if they had to, in the instance of fireworks and something had, they had to get out, they could run over there, open it up, and get out. I'm a little troubled by Note 11, which says, "The gate will remain locked except during snow removal operations." I'm not sure what the prior plan said, but I don't recall it saying "snow removal." I think it said, and if it, correct me if I'm wrong, that it was to be emergency use only. So why has this morphed into snow removal as opposed to emergency use only?
That was a item that we discussed in a pre-TAC conference. One of the members suggested that we add that note. If you back up to 2004, Compass Care came before this board with an addition, a proposed addition. One of the stipulations of planning board approval, I believe, was that the gate remained We're, again, the note on the plan now, it was just following the recommendations of the TAC committee. I would defer to David for more input.
I'll verify that. There was concern with the gate. The gate has been locked. It hasn't been an issue, but by pushing this gate now to the lot line, this seems to make sense, so it won't be damaged during snow removal operations. But to our knowledge, in the time since 2004 or what have you, there hasn't been any problem with it.
I agree with that, but I guess my concern is, as time goes on, we're going to forget these things, and I'm concerned one of these days that gate's just going to sort of disappear and that becomes an entrance and exit.
Lucy has actually got the old site plan. It says gate to remain locked except during snow removal operations and emergency ingress and egress for the fire department.
That's on the '04 plan.
Would you have any objection to that wording being left?
No, not at all.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Counsel Dwyer?
I know that this property has come up in discussions about the middle school potential expansion, and while that, you know, is obviously still under discussion and we don't have plans yet, I can understand why, even in the absence of a decision, parking is a key thing that's needed. But I guess if there is potential for this property to be in play, I'm wondering about the value of planting trees at this point. I can also understand why you'd want to improve a fence if you're going to put parking there. Is that part of the thinking, depending on what happens over the next 90 days or so?
The purpose of planting the trees?
Well, given that, you know, potentially this property would have a different use.
That it would have potential for future development, in which case the trees would be removed? Yeah. I hear you. That's a good point. I guess that's the risk we take. It was recommended to us again by TAC that since that tree was removed in its place, they would like to see us make an effort to replace a tree that was removed. So again, we're following their recommendations.
Okay. Well, I understand that under the circumstances, if, I mean, that may seem like an expense that might not be warranted until it's clear what's going to happen here. If the only reason that the applicant is doing it because TAC recommended it?
Well, normally, we would require vegetation in a situation like this. I would submit that a tree that's planted there could be unplanted, and I'm also, we're dealing with the situation as it is.
Right. Yeah. I understand that, that possibly a better choice would be to wait a few months to plant a tree rather than kill a tree through the unplanting of it.
I think David brings up a good point that I think we've got to deal with here right now. Yes?
Just to comment, I don't think these, these trees, Corey, probably run $300 to $400 a piece installed.
At the most, probably?
It's not, not a big expense. And now's the time to plant them, so they get their chance to grow. August is not good.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's, my own feeling is, I understand what you're saying, but it is a pretty minimal expense, I think. I think they probably have more money invested in the chain link.
Well, that's another discussion.
We're putting the fence on their lot line. Right now, it's not on anyone's lot line.
I think, let's get the questions from the applicant out of, if you're all set, Counsel Dwyer, I don't mean to cut you off, but we can get through the public hearing, and then... Any other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak to, for, or against the application? Second time, third and final time, to, for, or against? I'll now close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Department would recommend that you approve the amended site plan as presented, and add any stipulations that you deem appropriate.
Mr. Coker.
I'll do it. Move to approve with one stipulation, that Note 11 be changed to reflect the exact language as contained on the '04 plan.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second discussion on the motion? Counsel Dwyer?
I'd also just suggest, and I'm doing this as much for precedent as the cost of trees, that the applicant be given the opportunity to determine whether or not to plant the trees, depending on what the disposition of the property is.
Mr. Coker.
Mr. Chairman, I'm confused. I'd like to clarify something, which really has nothing to do with the application, if I may. The discussion about what's going to happen to the property. Perhaps some of us don't plug into the school board thing and what's going to happen. Can you give 25 words or less what you mean by "what's going to happen to the property"?
Well, I think, you know, as the school architect, conceptual design studies are underway right now, the, one of the options is to move toward essentially the right of the middle school for additional building. This, discussions have been had with the owner of the property about potentially this being one of those options, that would be the way that a middle school could expand. Those conceptual designs are to be delivered within the next 60 days. So it's not like we won't know fairly soon what a decision is going to be about whether there's desire to move in this direction. I understand that it will take a long time to negotiate, determine what happens, et cetera. But I was just thinking, if the only reason the applicant is planting the trees is because TAC sort of suggested that that needed to happen, under these circumstances, that may not be necessary. I can understand why the boundary fence is still viable. I can understand why people would want property, would want parking in the interim. I know it's a small cost item. It just seems to me there, that this might be a situation in which there's a little bit more flexibility.
But couldn't those trees be moved and up to...
I guess, if we could, if I could just ask the applicant one question. When do you expect to start construction?
Construction would take place this summer, as soon as possible. Planting, again, planting, summer isn't the best time for planting, spring, fall. If we could, we'd probably like to plant those late May, or we'll wait till the fall planting season.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes.
Would you see any problem with transplanting the trees, you know, six months from now, if that was necessary?
Would we?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
Thanks.
Or we could, the applicant could just plant it in the fall, which would avoid the whole situation, potentially.
Either way.
Okay.
Lots of options.
So, my guess is, at this point, planting in the fall is probably the only option. So, but... Any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Coviallo.
I didn't know how that was resolved. So the thought process is, by fall, they're probably going to know what they're going to do with the middle school, and maybe they come back and say, "There's no point in planting these things."
A good time to plant is between September 15th and October 15th, which is probably one they'll want to plant. How's that?
I'm still, no, I'm still confused. So are we saying that...
I think we need to address this application, is my concern, that we're kind of getting away from where we need to be.
If you approve this as presented, before we release a bond, it may not be much of a bond, but there'll be a bond, make sure the trees are planted.
So the applicant's probably, at this point, going to plant in the fall, which will give us five months, four or five months, so...
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none?
Just a comment, that if they don't ask for the bond, they can still hold off, if they so choose, and not plant them until they know the outcome.
They're going to do.
And that's, I think, what Counsel Dwyer was, Dwyer was saying, is just give some options.
Yeah, and try to put forth a policy point, just so we don't look quite so rigid in how we think about our policies.
We won't come down on them if they don't plant them.
Correct. We'll just hold the bond until it's planted. Absolutely.
Okay.
So... Any other discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye.
That was with the one stipulation.
Yes, with the one stipulation, yes. We'll move on to item E under public hearings. The application of Seven Islington Street LLC owner, the property located at 29 Tanner Street, and Seven Islington Street LLC owner, the property located at 40 Bridge Street, wherein preliminary and final subdivision approval is requested between two lots having the following. Lot 49 is shown on Assessor Plan 126, decreasing an area from 3,342 square feet to 3,025 square feet, with 48.96 feet of continuous street frontage on Tanner Street. And Lot 52 is shown on Assessor Plan 126, increasing an area from 7,111 square feet to 7,428 square feet, and with 119.47 feet of continuous street frontage on Bridge Street, and lying in a zone where a minimum lot area of 7,500 square feet and 100 feet of street frontage is required. Said properties are located in a mixed residential office district, central business B district, and historic district A, and are shown on Assessor Plan 126 as lots 49 and 52. Plat plan is on file in the Planning Department office, and is identified as Plan 05-02-08. The board action on this matter has been deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point, or it will be deemed waived. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Shagnon from IBIT Engineering, representing the applicant, Seven Islington Street LLC. Also here is their counsel, Paul McEckren. The proposal you have for you is to relocate a lot line between two existing lots. Quite simply, the Tanner Street parcel projects into the Bridge Street parcel, so that there are three lines that are shared, which are kind of in an odd configuration. So the proposal is to create a single line between the properties, creating the lot, moving the lot line, so that it is now just a single line from point to point, as opposed to the three jogs that exist now. In order to do this, we will need a variance, we will need to go to the Board of Adjustment. So we're here tonight, looking for preliminary subdivision approval, so we can then go forward to the Board of Adjustment. As the Tanner Street lot will get smaller, an area going from 3,342 square feet down to 3,025 square feet, which is only an, we're only talking about an area of 317 square feet in this proposal. As a part of the proposal, an existing back addition to the Tanner Street property would be removed, and the actual rear setback of the Tanner Street property would increase. It's still non-conforming, but it was, would increase from what it is today. We're aware of the staff memorandum, and we find the conditions acceptable with one point of discussion, and that is the recommendation of condition number three, which states that a condition prohibiting a through driveway over 29 Tanner to Seven Islington Street shall be added to the plat. This, the 40 Bridge Street lot had HDC approval for a proposed building on that lot. But the applicants are going to go forward with some, a proposal, that proposal slightly modified, to do a building on that lot. The, at the time of that HDC application, access was to and from the building, which had some covered parking from Bridge Street. We want to keep the option open to slightly different possible configuration. Since the first-floor retail or commercial space might be more valuable than first-floor parking, we may be looking at taking out some of that parking in the front, and only having a small amount of parking in the back, which we would need to access from Tanner Street. But I don't want to get into those issues in their, to their conclusion tonight. What I would suggest is, if we could take that condition off of the preliminary approval, and hold it to the final approval, which we would do concurrent to a site plan review, then all those issues can be discussed, worked out with traffic and safety and technical advisory, and brought back here for a final decision. So we're aware that that condition is desired by staff at this time. We're not asking to take it off forever. We just want to take it off for now, so we can go to the BOA on the issue of the lot line, and then treat that other issue as it should be treated in site plan and final subdivision approval. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any question, Mr. Hopley?
John, is Seven Islington Street Lot 51 or Lot 50?
And Lot 49?
I think it's 51.
I'm confused.
I think it's Lot 51.
They also own...
This lot here? Yeah. 51?
Yeah.
That is also owned by Seven Islington LLC. You might recall that that was...
That the street address of Seven Islington Street, not the LLC name. Which is the street address, Seven Islington Street.
That is this building here, which is at the corner of Islington and Bridge.
Lot 51.
Lot 51.
I guess I have a question for the department. I don't understand the connection between, on the condition going from 29 Tanner to Seven Islington, when you've got to cross 40 Bridge to do it.
That's correct. It should be to Bridge Street.
Oh, it should be...
To Bridge.
29 Tanner to 40 Bridge.
Correct. Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah.
No? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak to, for, or against the application? Second time, third and final time, to, for, or against? Seeing no one rise, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Coviallo.
For the purpose of discussion, I make a motion to approve the application with stipulations 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6, listed in the department memorandum.
I'll second if a discussion.
Discussion. David, could you?
You know, the reason the department put number three in is because our, the development on Bridge Street, or as it was then, Seven Islington, did not go through site review, and the driveway was a considerable point of issue with the city's technical advisory committee. Also, in discussions with the applicant, it was my understanding that the driveway would not be needed over 29 Tanner Street. The reason for putting the condition in was to put on notice to the applicant that this is a concern when you go through TAC, and as a condition of this board, it can come back before you to be removed. I think it is more significant to have the condition in before you go to TAC than it is to see whether or not you should put it in after TAC.
So we can remove it during the final review?
You could. The department would recommend that that condition should remain in at this time.
Mr. Hopley?
Well, then, should the condition be modified to 40 Bridge?
Correct. Yeah. Mr. Coker, and then Mr. Hetman.
I guess, you know, when I reviewed this, the only thing that jumped out to me was number three. And I guess the question I have for the department is, would it be fair to say that this is a highly unusual driveway, if it were to be put across that piece of property? Basically, using one piece of property to access via a driveway, another piece of property?
I would submit it would be unusual. Not only that, prior zoning ordinances would have prohibited it in certain districts.
Okay.
Not necessarily this district, but it was a prohibition.
I will be, unless Mr. Coviallo changes his motion, I will be voting against the motion, because I believe this should stay in. Many times, we do this chicken-and-the-egg thing, when they go somewhere, and something's in, or something's out, and that says something to the board that it's in front of. I believe this is an important enough issue, and that it should, should remain. As you say, you can, we can take it out at site review, if they have it on the site review plan, or the site plan, and we can discuss it at that time. This is preliminary. Let's leave it where it is. I think it's an important issue.
Mr. Hetman?
I was on the HDC, and we had any number of meetings over this proposed project. And while Tanner Street was not in the HDC, there was considerable concern, because it's a very authentic residential area, and cutting through there to make a driveway into a building didn't seem appropriate at all. Well, the HDC had no jurisdiction over Tanner, so I would agree with Mr. Coker, that we should leave stipulation three in. We could always take it out later, but we should leave it in at this point.
Mr. Coviallo.
I'd like to amend my, my motion, but I'd like to have a comment on it as well. So my amendment is to add stipulation three back in.
Okay. Modified for Mr. Hopley.
I also suggest a seventh. I have a note here that Steve Kellum is actually the owner of both parcels, so he needs to sign the application form as well.
That's acceptable. Yeah. Note seven. I would mention that it's not...
Can we get a second on that first?
I nodded, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
One comment is that, here is that this, this type of construction isn't that out of the ordinary, and that just down the street, my, my street names are a little hard. Is it, is it the Captain Andrew Hussey House, am I right, on Islington Street? Did I get the right name? Right of the Celebrity Sandwich and Cafe Kellum, there's a house. They had put a parking garage facility out the back, and they have an entrance out the back onto, is it Hanover at that point, still? That seems very similar to this, in the same neighborhood. So really, not that out of the ordinary. That may have been one property, I don't know.
It was one property. I would call the application.
It is quite large, it seems to me.
This is a pretty big building.
Like two. And it would also go to our, our master plan, to push buildings up front, and have parking in the rear here. So this is not, again, I'm saying we should modify it to include the stipulation for now, but, but there are, there are things in, in our zoning, in our master plan, that may say this is appropriate. But I agree, should keep it kept into now, we'd have more debate in the future.
No, I agree. Any further discussion?
I do need to add, though, you're talking two different zoning districts, two different types of intensity of development. So what you're saying may be a general rule, but you have to apply it to the specific situation, and I think that's where it fails.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you very much. We will move to our last public hearing of the evening. It's item F, the application of Madison Commercial Group LLC owner, the property located at 72 Marona Road, wherein site review approval is requested to construct a 3,400-square-foot footprint, retail, commercial use, commercial use building, garage and storage area, after the demolition of a portion of the existing building, with related paving, utilities, lighting, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 253, as Lot 3, and lies within the general business district. The board action on this matter has been deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point, or it will be deemed waived. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
I am Eric Weinberg with Altus Engineering. Good evening. Tonight with me also is, from Madison Resource Group, is Michelle Landkort, if you have any questions concerning the function and use of the building. As stated, the site is 72 Marona Road. It's the former Artisan Outlet parcel. Lot lies within the general business district, located on the assessor's map, is Map 253, Lot 3. We were before the board in 2003 for the approval of the Kindergarten, Marona Road and Marona Road extension. That portion of the site. In March, we were before the Board of Adjustment to get a variance, to allow reduced parking, to have 201 parking spaces, where 222 spaces are required. It's really one of the last sections of the site that is unimproved. When Madison Resources has purchased the land, the buildings several years ago, they've made quite an effort to upgrade it, and fix the roads, and the infrastructure, and upgrade the buildings, and it looks pretty nice now. And there's one small piece behind, or between, the existing facility, and the kindergarett that is a shed, and it's part of the old landfill area, and it's really in tough shape, and we want to take that down and do a building expansion. In addition, there's some storage trailers, box trailers, behind the building, that they're going to get rid of as they increase in space, and be able to utilize the interior of the building for their storage and records. On file, there are some letters from the abiders supporting the application, and I think it's Portsmouth Computer Group and, is it Dynatune?
It's Portsmouth Computer Group, it's Dynatune, and it's as well as the SuperValium.
SuperValium. And what it does, it really enhances their properties, as it's much more attractive area opposite Portsmouth Computer Group. Part of the construction is that it's going to be very close to, and within, the playground area for the kindergarett facility. So we've met with Matt Taylor, who's in charge of their building development, and laid out a construction management plan, and talked about encumbrances, and how we would work around that, so that we would reduce the area of the playground, and you can see that. the area of the playground, and you can see that, um, on your site plans. Just walk through a couple of site items and... First of all, getting the yellow here is where it's an existing gravel parking lot. What we're doing is going to make it a paved parking area for employee parking. We're going to clean up the dumpster area and add a dumpster on next to the kinder care dumpster, and then as a condition of the TAC approval, we'll put an enclosure on the dumpster that's on the other side, and that's the recycling area. What you see in orange here is, is the building expansion area, and that's going to have a two-car garage. And one of the reasons they're having, they want to put a garage up is that they have, um, company vehicle that they do a lot of snow plowing in the winter, obviously, with, and they've had a continued problem with theft of snow plows. They take them off, they get chained up, chains get, um, broken and off go the snowplows. So one of the reasons, um, to have the garage is actually for that vehicle. Going to relocate the existing generator transformers, and there's a utility pole that's right in the middle of our proposed driveway, and we looked at a bunch of different ways to utilize the back, and we found the best is to actually relocate the pole, and because the pole's in the right of way and greater than five feet, part of the condition is that we'll need the city council for relocation and licensing. Just wanted to talk a little bit about the design. Whenever we, you know, start designing a site, we, we want to look at different ways to implement LID, as low impact, on design. And on this site, one of the things that we did initially is that we, we got a variance for parking, so that instead of meeting the parking requirements by zoning, we're providing less paved areas. So that's, that's one area of LID. Another area is that we're not putting closed drainage on the back parking lot. We're expanding it, it's open drainage, so that it sheet flows onto treatment swales versus directly in the closed drainage. And then we also have added a, a rain garden. That area there, that will allow some infiltration as well as, um, provide a settling area for sediment. I think it's going to be a pretty significant improvement in the area because it is, if you've been out there, you can see it's gravelly and not really well maintained, so that the landscaping and, um, vegetating the area is going to be a great enhancement. I think we've, there were, at TAC, there were 15 items, and what we've done is, you know, a couple of letters addressed the items and also identified those on the plans. That's my presentation.
Any questions for the applicant? Uh, Mr. Coker?
Many years ago, when you did kinder care, I, I asked you the same question, and I'll ask it again. It sits on top of a dump.
Yes.
Have you done any borings or anything to determine that this is a safe area to put a building?
It, it's been deemed safe, as it was in the past, and, um, what we have lined up is actually a geotechnical engineers, Gillespie and Associates, and we've actually held off on them doing their work because, um, part of the landfill and-
Our best guess is that it somewhere terminates- Would you take the mic, Eric? Landfill somewhere terminates in this area because this part of the site, um, doesn't
have as much settling, and what we've decided is because this portion of the building is coming down, that, that little shed area in between the, uh, what we've decided is wait until we took down that building, do the, the actual borings, um, within the building footprint. That'll allow us to actually get a better representation of what's there versus trying to do them outside the area, so it's going to be a step process. We're also, um, this is based on Matt's experience, that we've talked to Matt Taylor out, we did the kinder care actual construction, that he doesn't think it's a significant amount of, um, refuge out there, and it might be cheaper and more prudent to actually pull it out, bring it to, you know, turnkey, a licensed landfill versus leaving it in place and, um, try, trying to drive piles there in a couple of reasons. One is piles, or few piles is very expensive, and second of all, um, I don't think any of us really feel comfortable driving piles next to an ongoing childcare center where accidents happen, and we just don't want that to happen. Yes, we're looking into that very much, so we're probably going to remove material.
Thank you.
Ms. Hayden?
Eric, do you have, if you do have a detail of the lighting in here?
Yes, it's on the last page, I think it is, in the, there's a photometric plan.
Oh, it's on the photometric plan?
On the photometric plan.
And, can you be quiet there? I'll answer this, but are there pole lights and lights on the building, or just-
There are both, yes.
Which sheet am I looking for?
I think the pole height, I don't have the plan in front of me, is the mounting height of 14 feet.
Any other questions? Well, Councilor Dwyer?
Uh, would you just describe during construction how the, where the children's play area will be, or how the portion of it will be protected, and then after construction, how the children's play area will be accessible and or not, and or visible from the new, new building?
The rear of the building has been designed to have no windows, so that people aren't working in there and peering out over the children, so that, um, we're, we're eliminating the windows in back. What's going to happen is, right now, the fence line doesn't go straight up to the building. The proposed conditions, we're actually going to tie it into the edges of the building, and because of that, um, I would, you know, typical design on a building like this is I would actually have, um, no gutters, no roof drains, and just have stone drip edge, and I thought that that would absolutely be, be the wrong thing with kids around, so we have a gutter system, so the kids can play up against the building, and there'll be no, um, potential for playing with stone or throwing stones and so forth. During construction, we're putting in a chain link fence and barrier, pulling it back outside the construction limit to allow access of vehicles and cliffs and so forth around the building, and far enough back on to allow us to relocate, relocate the water line. Could that help you out?
So during construction, the children's play area will be a small area that will be reduced, that will be surrounded by a fence?
That's right. It's, this is all fenced in here, and we're going to take from the corner of the building and just bring it back, so that they'll have this entire back of the site, and, and kinder care has expressed that they're comfortable with that for the duration.
Well, one other thing, I've never noticed as much attention to the rights of smokers as I have in, um, this description, and I wonder, I couldn't quite tell whether the children will be viewing the smoking outdoor platform and the indoor platform.
I don't think it's actually possible. It's right on this side, it's the pitch roof, the pitches in this direction and that direction.
Okay.
It's going to be very difficult.
Mr. Coviallo.
Eric, can you repeat the, uh, the foundation system you're planning? You said not piles? What were you planning? The spread footings?
Yeah, the foundation had, yeah, the foundation hasn't been designed yet because we haven't done the geotech report, but the intent would be that, it would be a, a, a spread footing or some sort, where we're pulling out the unsuitable material, coming back and bringing in structural fill.
Seeing that the, the landfill or the dump issue, is there any monitor, internal monitoring going to be happening to these, the, uh, the kinder care facility, like methane or?
None of that's required. They do have a, um, ventilation system underneath the building, but I don't think there's anything required.
The kinder care has a ventilation system underneath the building?
Yeah. Because that's on piles, and it's-
I was worried about disturbing, disturbing a, a methane pocket or something like that and having it enter, enter the facility. I mean, it may be outrageous, but I'm just curious what your thoughts are on that.
Uh, we haven't discussed that, and, you know, if there is an issue with that, you know, Gillespie would clearly raise that as in their report.
Ms. Hayden?
Just going back to photometric, I, I see that the spec is there. What I was actually looking for was a detail of what the lighting was, fixtures were going to look like. Would that be a problem to add that to the detail sheet?
No, I actually thought it was somewhere in the package, but-
Anyone else see? Well, let's put it that way, this way. If it's not on there, if we could just add the detail of what the fixtures are going to look like. And, and another question about, what, what sheet shows, I think you showed up there that the rain garden is going to be to the right of what you have is the lime green area there. Is that shown on a-
That's on your grading plans.
It's on the grading plans?
Yes.
Should, should that be shown on the site plan as well?
Um, it's more of a landscape and, and grading feature. It's also on the detail sheet on how it gets constructed.
Okay, great. Yep, thank you.
Mr. Coker?
Eric, would it be an unreasonable request that you send to the department, uh, the report from Gillespie?
Not at all.
I'm curious, because, you know, again, that was a question that I had when you came, I don't know how many years ago, for kinder care.
2003.
Yeah, and I remember that, because that was a concern at that time.
I, I think that's a reasonable request. I have, I have no issue at all making sure.
And if the department would be so kind as to forward it on to us?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, Eric, I've got a couple of questions for you. Um, I'm assuming your intention is to have the, uh, the rim of the rain garden four inches above the, uh, the bottom of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
What I do with that on John is that, my intent is that, uh, that's an overflow, and allows your sediment to filter out and so forth.
Okay. How do these rain gardens perform when you've, when you've called this out as a snow storage area?
Um, it actually, all the vegetation that you put in there is, um, what we call crushable vegetation, that can handle that, um, the snow load.
Okay, and I'm not going to let you get off that easy, but, um, if you go to, I had to find something, Eric. If you go to C7 on the rain garden details?
I know, there's a typo on there that I have a clay barrier.
Well, aside from that, it says, um, just let me finish. Rain garden planning shall meet native, shall be native to Maine, and there's a Maine DEP Storm Water Management Manual. This is New Hampshire, so-
Continue, continue reading is the fact that in there, DES does not have a standard detail for rain gardens.
I didn't get that part.
And that's, and that is the best detail that we've been able to come up with, working New England wide, or, um, is, I, I really like that detail, and New Hampshire has nothing.
Okay, thank you. It's good to know.
I think that match was a draw.
Right.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you.
Why, that caught my eye too, because I do know that some of the, that there is a difference between what's considered invasive. I know this is a different issue, but Maine and New Hampshire have some different plantings on invasive species lists, so, um, Maine plantings include some things that we consider in New Hampshire invasive. Just as a note.
They wouldn't be suitable for this application, would they?
Probably not.
You don't know, I had one in my yard.
Mr. Coviallo, do you have a question?
No, I'm trying to get your attention.
Oh, okay. Um, any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
I'll now open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak two, four, against the application? Second time, third and final time, two, four, against, seeing no one rise, we'll now close the public hearing. Mr. Coviallo.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the applicant, the application with the 15 stipulations listed in the department memorandum, and an additional stipulation that Mr. Coker asked for the, uh, geotechnical report to be forwarded to the department. Did, Ms. Hayden wanted the detail of the, would be, so that'd be 16, 17 would be Ms. Hayden's request for the detail for the, uh, site lighting pictures.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion on the motion? You are a sitting member.
Oh, I am?
Yep.
Oh, I believe so, if my-
I, I was counting, but I didn't know I could talk.
Yes, talk.
I just want to make sure, I'm, you're talking about Matt Taylor, and I, I know him, and I know him to be the land use guy for kinder care, so everything you've said makes sense, but I would want to make sure that kinder care does sign off on your construction plan, or at least doesn't object or something, I, because there's no letter in the file from them, it's just your word, and I know that Matt would be here if there was a problem, but-
Right. I would assume that if there was an issue, that they would be here tonight for the public hearing, I would assume, but, so.
Do you have anything, Eric?
No, I'm just coming up to answer whatever that was.
You don't have anything from kinder care?
No, we don't have anything.
I'll speak for the owners, please.
If, if you'd like to come up to the microphone, please, just so we can get it, your name and address.
My name is Michelle Rancourt, and I live in Dover, New Hampshire. I'm the executive assistant to the owners of the Plaza. We would never do anything for, against, or against kinder care, you know, we want them as a partner. We obviously want to improve the Plaza, and that was one of our first concerns, is that this work is being done right next door to a daycare, so that's foremost in our minds to make sure that they're on board, that they see everything, and that they're in agreement. Thank you.
So you see no problem in, in the-
No, no, Matt was really, uh, he was great to work with, and he's, he gave us some good suggestions, so yeah, we're really, we're, we're grateful for his expertise.
So, thank you. Mr. Coker?
I actually like Ms. Geffert's idea of, of actually signing off. As President Reagan said, trust but verify, and-
I could make a suggestion, why don't you look for a letter of support? We can't require someone to sign off. I mean, the abutters have gone out, the property owners are notified.
Okay, that may be a procedural difference in terms, but whatever, whatever shows that kinder care has, is comfortable with, or has approved, or whatever terminology you'd like to use. Letter of support would be fine.
Sounds good.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
That concludes our public hearings. We'll now move on to city council referrals and requests. The only item under that is item A, the request of Berora LLC to erect a freestanding pylon sign on a public right of way at the intersection of Market Street and Portsmouth Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Malcolm McNeil. I represent the applicant. I also presume I'm in the wrong building. I'm very unaccustomed to standing here without about 50 people behind me opposing what I'm doing. So I, I welcome this, and I think it should be the practice in the future. And I also hope to be bringing you more business, so you don't have to leave early on your Thursday nights. This particular matter comes to you as a result of an, an initial request to the city council to locate a sign in the public right of way. That's where the city council's involvement exists. I'm told that this has been done before at Durgan Lane, where the sign that you see in that vicinity is actually on public property as a result of a similar process, and there have been other identification signs also on private property, like at Marona Road and Pevely Hill Road, to provide signage to identify properties that otherwise are not readily seen. With regard to the sign that is being proposed, the sign is actually smaller in terms of its size than is permitted under the regulations, but it seeks to identify Commerce Center, which I think you're all familiar with. It contains approximately nine buildings, and frequently the tenants refer to their being in Commerce Center, and for people coming from the highway area, to find Commerce Center at the Portsmouth Boulevard entryway is not easy. Similarly, there is a new Hilton Homewood Suites Hotel that you approved two or three years ago, very substantial building. It does cater primarily to long-term stays, however, to find this hotel but for the temporary signs that the city has been very benevolent about is also very difficult. And thirdly, Hesser College has a facility at the site where there are a variety of different turnovers of students, if you will, that come to the area that would be aided coming from that direction. So that's the reason for the request. Now, there are some unusual characteristics of this site, which we hope would contribute to your support of the- this site, which we hope would contribute to your support of this recommendation. The sign itself that's being proposed in the materials that you have is, in fact, twenty-six feet plus from the paved surface. The law requires that a pedestal sign be twenty feet back from a property line. Now, the property line in this case, because of the way that this particular area has been revised through various street takings and street construction, the property line is a significant distance back from the right-of-way. So there's an overly large right-of-way, if you will. If this were a conventional type of lot, we could probably come very close to putting this sign in a permissible location, twenty feet back from the sideline. But because of this large, relatively large half-moon area that's in this right-of-way, this is a rather unusual, unique circumstance that, in our view, causes no adverse effect on the municipality by our request. If any of you have been up to the site, we actually tried to locate the sign. If you've been there, we put a framed sign in a legal location. And the upshot of that are the various notes that you see on the plan that AppelDor did. Namely, if we put the sign in the legal location, twenty feet back from our property line, the pedestrian footbridge on what I'll call the east side of Portsmouth Boulevard would block the sign. There would also be required additional cutting to the west toward the shopping center, if you will, in order to see the sign from that direction. Additionally, the sign is approximately in the legal location five feet below grade, so as such, there'd have to be a fill there to bring the sign to a reasonable level so it could be seen along the street. Also, if you've been out there, in the area through which you would view the legal sign, there's a beautiful three-foot-wide tree that stands in the way of visibility on the street. The proposed sign is eighty-four square feet, where a hundred and fifty square feet is permitted. The sign is thirteen point five feet high, where twenty feet is permitted. I've reviewed very carefully the memorandum that the planning department has submitted to you, and we support both their findings and their conclusions. It said that while not common, this type of sign request is also not unique, and as such, I think it's reasonable for the board to review it. Additionally, and I think importantly, what will control this is a license, as opposed to an easement. A license is a lesser value in real estate, and it's designed to be readily revocable, and it will be subject to liability protections with regard to the city. It is likely that the language which the city attorney will approve will just say that the sign is there with the consent of the city. If the city wishes to have it moved, it will be moved at the applicant's expense. Additionally, there was a provision that we be as conscious as possible with regard to reduction of the lumens and lighting with regard to this internally illuminated sign, and we've agreed that that's an appropriate condition. So we're just requesting a sign which provides reasonable notice, in our view, without an adverse effect on the interests of the city, and with the ready ability of the city to revoke the sign if what I'm suggesting to you is not the case. I think the reason this has come to the planning board, by the way, the City Council, if you will, could act on this on their own. I think they're seeking your expertise and determination from a planning perspective whether the sign creates an issue.
Mr. Hitman.
There are a couple of signs there now. I presume they're temporary. This will replace all of those?
Yes, there are temporary signs there right now.
So those will all be gone if this gets approved?
The city has been very patient with regard to the signage. Thank you, Mr. Hopley.
Including the real estate?
Yes. I understand that the signs will be removed.
Hunter Dwyer.
Tell me if this discussion should happen a little bit later, but because, of course, this did come to the council, people are more aware of it than they might be to other things that come before us. And it's about the internal illumination. And so my question of you would be whether that's an absolutely necessary aspect of it, or whether there are alternatives to shining light on it without it being internally illuminated.
We explored that with the sign people in terms of the glare and quality of doing it that way. They suggested that a well-designed, internally illuminated form of illumination would have at least as desirable an effect. And you retain ultimate control over this by the condition that's been imposed. So if, for some reason, the planning department and their expert comes to the conclusion that the lighting is excessive, we'd have to change it.
Ms. Hayden.
Let me pursue that more directly. If that fifth stipulation was changed to be not an internally illuminated sign, would you still want to go forward with this in the city right-of-way?
I don't have authority to do that. I'm not saying that I oppose it, but I'm, the difficulty that I have is that form of illumination may be offensive to the client, and I just don't know whether that would create an issue.
If I can ask a follow-up. If this sign were to not be in the public right-of-way, but on, within the property, is that the same parcel that's the subject of our Concom Planning Board Sight Walk next?
Yes, it is.
So if, in my understanding, under that concept that's being put forward, that parcel would become a retail. So if that, if that project, separate project went through, would all that vegetation be removed anyway or significantly?
Some of it would be removed, but not all of it.
And do you think if that project went forward as it's currently in its conceptual phase, would you need to come back and look at the sign differently?
I don't know yet. Okay, I think it would depend on how that progresses. Recognizing that that has not been completed, may not be completed, the fact that we've had a hotel up for a year without a permanent sign at the end of the street, and the fact that you have a revocable license, in my view, would protect you in the event. There needed to be some changes.
Thanks.
Mr. Coker.
Elaborating on Cindy's points, I have two questions. The wetlands that is there and shown at the top of your plan, as I recall from the, and David, please correct me if I'm wrong, I recall from the discussion in the work session that those are jurisdictional wetlands. Is that correct?
I'm not so sure about that exact location. I could have that wrong. I think that's limited, but I'm not positive.
Okay, the reason I'm questioning that is, according to the handy-dandy Altus Engineering little ruler here, is vegetation's going to be cleared forty feet from the edge of the wetland, and this sign is ninety-two feet from the edge of the wetland. Therefore, if the wetland is jurisdictional, which I, as I recall, I think it is, but I could be wrong, why aren't we talking about conditional use?
I would ask, I don't believe a conditional use is needed for this one, but if it is, then it would be, it's within a right-of-way, so it might even be exempted from the conditional use requirement.
But vegetation's being removed, you know, this is more, and please correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm not aware of a need for a conditional use permit. If there is one, we will seek one.
Okay, that's A. B, and again, I would ask for correcting if I'm wrong. Our zoning prohibits internally illuminated signs. Is that correct?
Only in the central business district.
Only in the central business district, and this is zoned?
It's actually within a right-of-way, so technically, the zoning may not even apply to it because it's not private property.
So this is one of those, the city doesn't have to follow its own rules sort of deals?
That isn't quite right either. The zoning applies to private property. This is a city right-of-way, so it's held in common with everyone, and that's why it's involving the council.
How can we determine, that's fine, but how can we determine whether or not this is jurisdictional, whether or not this needs a conditional use?
I would suggest you add that as a stipulation before a report goes back to the council, so we can have that straightened out. I don't think it is, but I'm not prepared to say categorically no.
Nor am I, and I agree there's a conditional.
That's fine.
And frankly, Don, we're going to be on-site there shortly.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't have, I'm not a wetland scientist, so I don't know where the edge of the wetland is, so. I believe the plans here, so.
Ms. Hayden.
Malcolm, the only dimension that's not shown on the sign, unless I'm missing it, is the depth of the sign, how thick this sign is, and that, I assume this is a two-faced, what I call a two-faced sign?
Yes. I'm sorry to say I don't know the thickness, but it would be adequate to house the lighting, is my presumption.
Okay, and the intent is it would have the same, it would look the same from both sides?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And also, a two-faced sign would be counted the same, so there's no increase in square footage that the ordinance would be looking at, or in ordinance would be looking at.
Any other questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you. All we're seeking is a recommendation.
Mr. Covial.
So there won't be a public hearing?
No.
Question for the department, then. I'm trying to find the difference. I'm not, I'm not opposed to this sign. I think this is, I have no problem with it. I wish it was externally illuminated, if it could be, if it wasn't offensive to the owner. But I'm trying to find the difference between this product, this application or recommendation to the one we got at Exchange City, just down the street a little bit, the sign in the right-of-way. And that was the opinion from the department then was denied because it was in the right-of-way. Why, what's the difference?
For the initial one would be that there was no access to that site from that location. This sign here is to identify the access into Portsmouth Boulevard, prime tenant, access to Commerce Way, many tenants. That's one reason we spent a fair amount of effort and confirmed with Attorney McNeil, not so much on signed content, but on the number of signed faces, so that it would serve merely as an identification to a number of sites.
That's fine by me. Great, thank you.
Ms. Hayden.
I have no problem with the sign, except the internal illumination, which I have a lot of concern about in that location. And I think, you know, I look at the Osprey Landing sign, that it's set back more, but that is externally illuminated. It's a really sharp-looking sign, and you can see it from a long ways away. So I would kind of hate to see this board recommend it with that fifth stipulation with the internal illumination. I'd rather we recommend that it's externally lit. And if, you know, the council, this is a recommendation that this board has to the council, and the council has the option to change that, and the applicant, perhaps by the time this gets to the council, will have an opinion on whether that's acceptable to them. But I would hate to see us recommend something like that.
If you were going to do that, it would suggest that you still keep the controls on it for review by DPW and the lighting.
I'll make that into a motion.
And take the control of inspection off?
Is that a motion?
Yes. To keep the controls on, but we'd like to have it be an externally illuminated sign.
Okay.
Don's conditional use.
Can we have a second on that?
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
A stipulation added that, and I'm not sure of the language, that, say, Peter Brits or someone review the wetlands to see if this is jurisdictional wetlands, and if so...
Bring it back to you.
Bring it back for a conditional use?
Bring it back as a report to this board before it goes to the council.
Okay, that's fair.
Do we need a report back to this board before we give the council a recommendation on this item? About, do we need, do we need to answer the conditional use question before we report back to the council?
I would think it would be helpful to the council to know if it was required, or perhaps we can make that determination and provide it along with the report.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think we need to hold up a report back.
I mean, if this is, if it's a non-jurisdictional wetland, it's a moot point, so no need to hold it up. If it is, then we have every reason in the world...
And the council will be aware of that.
Can we also make a stipulation? Have this be the only sign? Only sign? There's three out there now?
Why don't you make the stipulation instead that the existing non-permitted signs be removed?
I'd like to make an amendment, that the non-permanent sign be removed, if that's acceptable.
Including the real estate sign.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Moving on to Item Four, New Business. The only item under that is Item A, update on U.S. Route One Advisory Committee. Okay, under New Business, we have three items. Item A is update on U.S. Route One Advisory Committee. Rockingham Planning Commission.
Rockingham Planning Commission, in conjunction with DOT and a number of other interested parties, including representatives from the municipalities along the corridor, have been working approximately two years on a study of what needs to be done to this corridor. It's an update of the old Kimball Chase study and the old Highway Memorandum Number One. They have a draft report. We have made copies of it, which we'd ask that you take with you when you leave tonight. It's rather bulky, but the intent would be is that we would like you to schedule perhaps forty-five minutes at your next meeting in June, so that you can have a brief presentation on the findings of the study and work on it. What I would recommend is that you schedule approximately seven to seven forty-five. If it goes over a few minutes or it's under a few minutes, then we'll start the regular meeting to allow a presentation on the Route One Advisory Committee.
Do we have an idea what the agenda looks like next month?
So far, it's pretty light.
Okay.
Do you need a motion, Dan?
Probably just jinxed it. No, I think finding, the consensus of the board would be enough.
Seven to seven forty-five. Item B, the request of Harbor Corp. LLC for a one-year extension of subdivision approval, which was granted on June 7, 2007, for property located off of Deer Street, Green Street, Russell Street, Market Street, and Maplewood Avenue.
I think you could also open up the next one, too, since they are related.
Item C as well, the request of Harbor Corp. LLC for a one-year extension of site review approval, which was granted on June 7, 2007, for property located off of Deer Street, Green Street, Russell Street, Market Street, and Maplewood Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, Attorney McNeil is here to address the board as to what brings us about. Normally, the department would recommend that you grant this extension as a normal course of your action. However, there was litigation, and litigation normally stays at action, and so in abundance of caution, Attorney McNeil has made this proposal and would suggest that you allow him to speak to it.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I represent Harbor Corp. LLC. As long as I've been coming here, when a permit has been appealed, it stays the running of the expiration date of any permit. That has been the custom practice and policy. This case has resulted in every conceivable form of litigation, and after both your subdivision and site review approval of this project, 1,000 Market Street Ocean Properties appealed the result, and the case is still pending. It's in the Supreme Court presently. We cannot proceed with either approvals despite the fact that the subdivision was not appealed. The subdivision, of course, is dependent upon the site review approval. So I indicated to the city, would you just confirm to me that the usual custom and practice applies? And the city clearly confirmed that the usual custom and practice has been a consistent one, but it's also one that is not clearly supported within your regulations. So this is not something I'm about to take a chance with, with regard to this particular case in particular. So in terms of this case, although we haven't been able to build, we haven't been able to proceed, and we've been in litigation ever since you've approved it, your regulations clearly provide for an extension. I'm hopeful that we won't be back here again. I know you all read the paper, and we hope we're near to conclusion with regard to all of this. But that's why I've presented this to you, just in an overabundance of caution.
The department would suggest that you grant these extensions, and perhaps even note that this is being done in recognition of the special characteristics of this, i.e. that you normally would not need to do this, because our normal course of events is to grant, is to allow it to continue for one year beyond the last date of court action, so that depending on what happens, we may see this back before us again, and hopefully we won't.
If it could be a motion to grant the extension.
We'll vote on them individually.
Yes.
So it would be Item B for the one-year extension of the subdivision. So it would be Item B for the one-year extension of the subdivision approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposing? The chair votes aye. Item C, under New Business, for a one-year extension of site review approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing? The chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe that concludes New Business.
Yes.
We'll move on to Item Five, Old Business. There's one item, Appointment of the Planning Board Representative to the Historic District Commission.
David? We're in the attempt still of trying to get the planets to completely align, so we suggest that you table us till the June nineteenth meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing? The chair votes aye.
Translations will be provided after the meeting, if they are needed.
David, any Old Business? I know there are a couple of handouts that we should probably mention.
Yes, thank you. We'd like to give you, for your review, we tried to update the schedule for the rest of the, for the rest of May and June. I'd also indicate to you, the reason your agendas didn't pick up the, the request from the Westin is that these requests were just received, and the agenda was modified earlier this week. What we're looking to do is to, just to let you know, that on next week, we're doing the Zoning 101 down at the Levinson Room. It will be televised. It'll start at six thirty.
Actually, it's not going to be televised, it's going to be recorded and broadcast at a later date.
And then on May twenty-ninth, we're doing the joint sightwalk with the Conservation Commission. We have a separate agenda, which will be mailed out to you. It'll have a meeting place, it'll be off of Commerce Way. Then on June fifth, I'll be working with Rick Tainer of Tainer Associates, and the same on June twelfth. June nineteenth, we could come together if need dictates to gain that extra hour. And on June twenty-sixth, we should also be able to work on the zoning ordinance. I don't think there are any surprises here, but we thought you might like to see it in, in a tabular form.
Thank you. There's also, there was a handout, I believe, for Weathering the Storm, June twelfth, at the Great Bay Gallery in Somersworth. I believe it's an eight-hour seminar. I've read through it, and I'm actually going to attend. It's pretty informative. I think the afternoon, there's a discussion at the UNH Stormwater Center. So if any of you can get the day off, it's a, I think it's going to be a pretty good seminar there.
If you want to let us know about that, we'll see what we can do to it.
Mr. Coviallo.
A question about Zoning 101. Is that, the intent of that, more education of the public, or education of the planning board members, or both?
Yes, both, really all. We've, we've specifically sent invitations to all the land use boards, as well as the Economic Development Commission, because there's been a lot of questions about, you know, understanding the difference between zoning and site review and building codes, and then the whole green aspect. So it's both for our boards, as well as the public.
So we're encouraged to attend?
If you so desire. Or you can watch it from the comfort of your couch when it is rebroadcast.
So, Mr. Coker.
Which I will have to do, because I will be in New Jersey, so.
Poor thing.
Making a living and all this fun, so.
Any other housekeeping items that we have?
I, one other thing I want to comment, if we're at the end. Next month, I'm graduating from a program called Leadership Seacoast. I don't know how many of you are familiar with, with the program.
Or alumni.
Are there a bunch of alumni here? I would encourage you, if you guys are interested, to check out leadershipseacoast.org and learn more about it. I think it is a, a very valuable program for any one of us. There's a lot of planning issues that come up. The days, it's one, one day a month for about six months, and the day, days are spent on different topics. One, the examples are Government Day, Education Day, Justice Day, Environmental Day, and Economic Development Day. Each day, I've, one day on Health and Human Services. Each day, I have found things that have added to my role as a planning board member. And I think, I encourage you, if you haven't done it, to apply, and I'd be glad to put you down as a recommendation to enter, if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Any other last remaining items, no? David?
Moved to adjourn.
Moved to adjourn?
Yes, adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.